Okay, we're ready.
Mr. Smaw, we're ready.
All right. First, I'd like to say good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our president would not be joining us for pre-council, but he will be joining us for our regular meeting. And we're now being our capable of hand up by City Clerk is Lisa Lambert.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, January 26th. We have approval of Ms. from January 19th.
That's good.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, will we have a finance report today?
If you will. Yes, I see you will give that report.
Okay. Appeals, we have requests for wave with the noise ordinance on every Sunday in January and February from 3:00 until 8:00 p.m. And this is in Public Safety Memorial Park.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. We have a request for February 6th on Warwick Road from 3:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m.
That's okay.
February 14th on South Washington Avenue from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That's District 2.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, okay. Public hearings, today is a public hearing to fix the cost of demolition of structures at 707 Marine Street, 2353 Octavia Drive, 1413 Windsor Avenue, 5050 Washington Boulevard, 7156 Mobile Street, declaring the structures public nuisances and ordering them demolished, 2766 LaCren Street, 1551 Kellogg Street, 6991 Bell and Graff, formerly known as 5620 Perry Road, and 4770 formerly known as 117 Campanella Drive South.
Okay, on...
Do we have anybody?
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Richardson?
On LaCren Street, I don't see no reason why that house should be demolished. The foundation is not undermined, it's not open to vagrants. It has a problem with the screen around it, a few boards. But the structure itself, I didn't see anything in the portal itself. That it was not a solid house. And I don't see no justification for a house to be knocked down.
Do we have Mr. David Dokkenbaum on the line?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, David Dokkenbaum, Municipal Enforcement. And just to go over briefly, the inspection reports that I have indicate that we have some fire damage with the property, but also some compromised walls. And in the corner of the foundation has also been compromised. And there's a photograph in your packet that you should have available that shows the rear corner of the structure, and that's going to be the most visible, where we have some foundation and exterior wall problems. And then we're also had some evidence of the roof leaking. So we do have three issues, foundation, exterior wall, and some roof problems.
My, 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 so, Mr. Doc, what about, are you in touch with the owners?
We have sent out certified mail as required. And I'm not showing anything in the file that we've had contact from the owner as a follow-up from not only sending the certified first-class mail, and then also posting the property, filing a list pending, but the, for this location, the title report from our real estate department is showing that it's, the owners have, are deceased. And we have heirs of Hardy Roden and Annie Bell Roden. And it looks like we have a total of 10 heirs that we've sent out to, most of them being grandchildren of the owner. And then we also sent notice to, because it's tax delinquent, to the State of Alabama Revenue Department. So at this point, I have no notes in the file that any of the heirs that we sent notice to have contacted us regarding maintenance of this property.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we go the route of seeking a quiet title and invest the $2,000 into that house, put it up for sale, let somebody live in it. It'll be one of the thousand houses you want to put on the market. That could be one of them. It's not going to take much to get the house going. It has some issues, but certainly it's not willing to knock the entire house down. It has been abandoned. It needs some work. But it could be made available to other citizens. The city can go in, do what we need to do, put the house on the market, get our money, make some money, and keep hope alive in that neighborhood. Because what we're going to do, we're going to create a vacant lot. The city going to have to go out there and cut it, cut it, cut it, complaints, complaints, complaints. That's what I recommend we do, instead of knocking the house down. Let somebody evaluate.
So I'd ask Jamie Roberts to look at this a little closer and see what he can come up with. And he'll get, he will get back with you, okay?
Right, sounds good.
So, Mr. Richardson, you want to lay this matter over for one or two weeks?
Let's say it over for a month. Let's give, because they're going to, they're going to need each other to see what they can do about the other owners. We probably lay it over three months, probably, to give Jamie enough time to do what he needs, what he needs to do. Unless the mayor say otherwise, if the mayor say otherwise, then...
Whatever y'all want to do, hold on a little, we'll try to work within that timeline.
Okay. Let's hold it over a month, month, and then let Jamie come back with us and let the mayor come back and let us know what we are with that. Okay? Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. I did not receive anyone to speak to non-agenda items or agenda items this week. Essential COVID-19 items held over, 88002, ordinance deemed a vacant property along Dog River Road, no longer needed for public or municipal purpose, and authorizing the sale to MJM LLC. 08029, approved purchase order to emergency equipment professional for three Braun Liberty ambulances. 08030, approved purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for two 4x4 extended cab pickup trucks. And 031, approving purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for three 4x2 pickup trucks. 09032, reallocate money from Capital Prodo Shell Road sidewalks from Union to Highland to grant funds to Cab O'Shell Road sidewalks from Union to Highland.
Okay, I would like to, I would like to say something right here. I do have any idea as to when we would have the actual contract to construct the sidewalks. We're going to have another, another one on this same agenda to hire someone to oversee the project and make sure is, everything is being done according to specs. We don't, with this one, is to put the money in there to do it. There is no contract to actually do it. And I want to know where we are with that.
Councilman, this is Jim DeLaup. So we're reallocating the funds, that's what you see here. There's one additional contract on here for the CE and I on this week's agenda. Next week's agenda will be the one for the construction contract. It just didn't make it in time on this one.
All right, no problem, let's go.
Yep.
I have a question.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. This also involves a tap grant, and it was from, was supposed to be from Galloway to, well, now it's Galloway to Hillcrest on Airport. And I was wondering if I could have a status update, since this one also goes back a number of years, that the grant was allocated from the MPO.
The, we're still in the process, we're still in the process of getting that easement from the church. We may be able to speak more about where that is, but that's where we are with that Airport Boulevard cap grant.
Okay, so that, that's the area of the church that has been the whole holdup for the last year on getting that?
That is the, that is the last holdup before we go to approval to start bidding the project, yes.
Okay, is there anything my office can do to talk to any members or with someone with the church, if there's, if they're having a problem? I mean, it doesn't require, I don't think, any, is it requiring some purchase from the church?
Councilman Richardson's Michelle Mountain. It doesn't, they're, the pickle is getting the deacons all together to vote on it, quite frankly. I talked to the pastor yesterday, and that's what they're trying to do, yeah. They want to meet with the engineers out there, and we're trying to line it up for a lunch date because all the deacons have other full-time jobs. So it's either going to have to be an evening meeting or a lunch meeting, because they do have some engineering-type questions.
About a pathway that already goes through the city's right-of-way?
Yeah.
Doesn't, it doesn't really compute. I mean, I, I had offered to call to the pastor who is, I mean, he opened his church a number of years ago to be a voting center, so they're, they're pretty wired up in the community. I mean, if you're not purchasing, what is, what does their deacon have to do with a right-of-way that the city already owns?
They have to get, it's my understanding they have to get three deacons together to vote on it. And they have some engineering questions prior, they need to ask some of the engineers. And they'd like to be all on site to do that before they vote on it.
And it, and it is, and best, it is, it is an easement. So they are granting us permission onto part of their property.
Okay, are we paying them for it, like on McGregor? Or is this just a temporary type thing?
I don't think it's, it's a temporary easement, but it's, maybe it can, it's, it's, it may be that we're just a little bit out of the right-of-way. So it's not something we normally pay for with a sidewalk.
Okay, all right. Can I, can, all right. So it's, it's held up, in other words, until they decide, okay?
I mean, you can nudge Pastor Wright to see.
Yeah, yeah, that, I had offered that a number of months ago, so I will...
They've been hard to catch up with, honestly. We've been trying to get together for like two months. And then with the holidays, it kind of, you know, went to pot, but we're trying again. I just talked to him yesterday.
Okay, all righty, I'll do what, hopefully, get ahold of him. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk?
21033, authorized contract with Yamaha Motor Finance Corporation USA for leasing of golf carts. 21041, authorized contract with Goodwood Mills in K-wood for O'Shell Road cap sidewalk from Union Avenue to Highland Avenue. Essential COVID items being introduced for the first time. 34003, ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the city code to include the real property business privileged tax applicable to lessors of residential buildings and dwellings to the schedule of licenses.
Counsel, anyone have any questions? Mr. Williams, you mute on if this...
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I, I read the review on that, and it, I just want to make sure that we're not creating this huge monster that right now, if you have 10 properties, I think it's 10 or less, then you're, you're fine. In this case, we're going to make, even if you have one property, you have to get a business license. Do you have to get 10 licenses? Do they have to be separate? What's, what's going to be the story after this? Are they going to still pay 25 a property, or what goes on? This, I mean, it's just a legal and administrative question. I don't, why, why are we doing this? And then what's going to be the procedure?
Counsel, Mr. James Roberts. The, the two primary reasons for this, we've got a, just researching a batch of LLCs that get set up for every nine units they own. So it's a giant loophole in the system, and this closes that loophole. And then the second reason is, as part of the licensing process, we're going to have, we're getting, with revenue, to have the applicant put on their, their application who the responsible party is for maintenance on the property. So David Dokkenbaum has that for code violations. That's what we're looking at on. It's, it essentially, it's, legal have to double-check on this form of it. Each license is address-based, so if you have more than one and there's scatter sites, you would have to have one for each address. But the fee for less than 10 is $25 per. So we're trying not to overburden at the same time.
So if they have one license now, and they're paying 25 per property, now they're going to have to go and get nine more licenses if they have 10 properties.
But right now, they don't have a license, and they're, they're using this 10 or less exemption to not tell us they're renting the property. And there's transactions happening out in the city that we don't know about as the city.
I understand that. I'm, I'm good with that. I just, I'm, I know what a challenge it is to work with our website at times to apply for business licenses. And in the business that I manage, I have to do two licenses. And it takes a little bit of time. If I had to do 10, I'd be mad. And rightfully so. So why can't I have one license and then pay a separate fee for each one of the others that fall under that license? Why, why 10 licenses?
But, Councilman Williams? This is Flo Kessler?
Yep.
Yeah, all business licenses are location-specific. If you had three convenience stores, you'd need a license for each location. That's part of the state law, that's part of the city license code.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if... Mr. President?
Yes.
I mean, hi, Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Dave?
I support this ordinance. I have just, spending time in the district I represent, both on foot and in my car, I have just seen numerous, numerous instances of where landlords who have acquired properties, both multi-tenant and single-family residences, and are do, are really doing nothing to maintain those, those residences. And it pulls down the entire neighborhood. And I've seen neighborhoods that, that 50 years or so ago were really solid neighborhoods, where people took pride in their homes and maintained their homes. And, and because, because a number of the houses in the neighborhood are now being rented out and not maintained, it's pulling the whole neighborhood down. So I think, I think any effort the city can do, any effort the city can take to enhance its ability to ensure that these residential properties are properly maintained is a good, is a good effort.
Flo and/or the mayor, on this, how will it or will it impact houses that are owned by the Housing Board or if they are Section 8 homes? Is that going to impact them as well, and how?
But, Councilwoman Gregory, Section 8 homes, I believe, Jamie, you can jump in on this. I believe that those are exempt, but there is also an exemption generally under the license code for all kinds of charitable organizations. So if they're, suppose there's like a nonprofit that provides housing for a veteran or something like that, if they qualify as a nonprofit and are exempt from abhorrent taxes and other taxes, it would also be exempt from this license code.
Yeah, it's, it's, any privately-owned property, including some Section 8, depends on the ownership status, would have to get the license. Housing authority, traditional nonprofits would be exempt, but they have to submit the same information to show their exemption so we know who their contact is still for their properties.
Yeah, I think that would be the main thing, is who is the contact? Because it gets back to the maintenance of the properties. And we want to make sure that no matter who owns it, whether it's a private individual or Housing Board, that these properties are maintained. I mean, I think that's the interest, end goal at any rate.
It is, yeah.
Now, Jamie, I thought when I read the ordinance that, that it exempted properties owned by the Housing Board.
It exempts the Housing Authority's properties, but most of the Section 8 properties privately-owned and rented out, and they get a voucher back. And so those might have to get a license.
Yeah, I think it's important to separate the properties that are actually owned by the Housing Board versus the Section 8 properties. So my understanding is the property that's actually owned by the Housing Board is exempt from this ordinance.
It is, other than, other than submitting their responsible party also, but they're exempt from the fee in the, the structure, yes.
Okay, but, but the Section 8 housing, the owners of properties that are being used for Section 8 purposes, they would not be exempt.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe this ought to go to a committee.
Why?
Is there too many questions?
No, we've answered all, all the questions have been answered.
One other quick question for folks who do own multiple properties. How are we going to alert them that they have to get business licenses for each of these properties now?
Joe said he ought to answer the vote.
First part of your question cut out. You're asking how are they going to be notified?
Right.
Through the traditional means, and we'll have to come up with some additional marketing because the current structure is in place. There is no license right now for the less than 10.
The biggest change, and if I need to stand corrected, is that in the past, if they had less than 10, they didn't have to register their ownership and/or give any information to the city. And the whole idea is to track, because we have so many of these parcels around town that are not kept up. And if the city knew what was going on, it would be helpful to neighbors who are affected or by the person who is in the parcel that has a complaint. So again, I think this is not such a new premise, because if they had more than 10, they were already acknowledging it to the city and, and having a fee that they paid. So it's really just changing the people who have 10 or less. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, the bulk of what David Dokkenbaum runs into these days, other than just abandoned property, is going to be small rental property with major code violations.
Right.
And this, this will catch those and allow him to know who the contact is, instead of sending it to somebody out of state that have a local contact that we can send a letter to notify them of the issues.
I think it will help neighborhoods in general to deal with these parcels, which then create the cancer of more and more blight. So I think it's, again, if it was completely novel and new, it would be something that maybe we would want to go under committee auspices, but I feel like this is something that we're just really housekeeping to do it better.
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President?
Sorry.
What we have done is gone to affect... No.
Ms. Rich, are you finished?
Yes, that's fine.
Mr. Dave, then, Mr. Richardson.
Hey, I just, to me, to me, the, what, what, what Mr. Roberts said earlier, that there have been people who've been gaming the system and put nine, nine houses under one name and another nine houses under another name. That demonstrates the need for this action. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. We are amending the ordinance. Women, I mean, on the standard for 3403 of the code to include the real property business privilege tax applicable to lessors of residential, of... Hold on a second. Now I got to move it down where I can see it. Okay, purpose to... Lessors and residential buildings and dwellings to the scheduled license. So, so this, this is going to have some effect on some, some business owners out there. And I think they ought to have to say so. I think, I think we all do. We are, we are amending the law to affect some of our citizens. We, we did the same thing with, with Airbnb. We, we did the same thing with food trucks. It's going to affect some of our citizens that own trucks. And this is going to affect some of our citizens that own businesses and property. And, and here, we are asking all of these questions about it. I think we ought to come and, and have a committee meeting on that. It may not last but one minute, but we were giving our citizens the opportunity to come and voice their opinion on that. I don't think we are, are just focused in. It's a change of what, how we normally would be doing business. And there is what this change is.
It's not an emergency, get this thing done right away in a couple of weeks. So while we discuss it, it's certainly in order.
Yeah. CJ?
Ms. Gregory?
Thank you. Yeah, I think so too. While I think it's a good idea, and certainly to help preserve the sanctity, not the sanctity, but to preserve our neighborhoods, I think it's important to do. But at the same time, there are some people who are landlords who have less than 10 properties who do a really good job. So in some respects, we're punishing the many for the acts of a few, which unfortunately is what we wind up doing a lot of times anyway. So in order to get the word out and make sure they all understand exactly what we're doing, I really don't have a problem with laying it over and having a committee meeting just to help put the word out, and if there are any questions, to get them answers for these people who are going to be impacted and, you know, certainly don't know it now and may not see the news. They may not see news releases, they may not be on our newsletters, you know? So we just need to do the best we can to get the word out about what we're, what we're doing, and hopefully give people a chance to ask some questions.
Mr. Dave?
I'm not going to oppose sending it to a committee. Transparency, more transparency is always better than less transparency. But, but I don't, I really don't see it as punishing anyone. These people are operating businesses. They ought to be required to, to register that business with the city and pay some small, this exceedingly small fee in order to register their business. I don't see it as punitive at all. They're operating a business, they ought to be treated as such.
I don't disagree with that, but they all know...
I didn't mean punishment like that, it's just because there are some problems that some people are creating, we're having to go back and look at changing the ordinance, whereas some people are doing a great job taking care of their properties. Now we're having to go in and change the ordinance because a lot are not. I mean, punishment is just kind of a phrase to use. And it's what we do with laws a lot of times anyway. We have to create a law to protect the people because some folks are just, are not doing what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, it seems like sometimes we always want to punish the good people. And I really think that this might end up happening also. But the biggest thing is really is enforcement. I mean, we have enough also on the books right now that we can go in and to enforce different situation. But even if this here was the pass before it's the council, who's really going to enforce that these, you know, people that have five or four homes actually have business license? And then on top of that, you know, then going back and just, you know, enforce the code violations. And that's a big issue that I really have within my district is really just enforcement, you know? That's my biggest problem.
When, maybe when we go to committee, CJ, we can ask those questions because having a better record of who owns each property might actually help with enforcement. So all questions that I think we can get answered.
Yeah, you'll know who to go after.
Right.
This, I, I understand what CJ said. I didn't mean to interrupt you, CJ. And I, and I have also had concerns in the past when we... CJ, and I, and I have also had concerns in the past when we, um, took up and passed ordinances that, you know, the, the ability to enforce them was, uh, it's kind of obscure. We had this discussion the other day on the, on the, uh, on the dog.
Yeah, tethering.
Tethering, and, and there, and there are some of the, that, some of that issue, uh, also affects, uh, the food trucks. So we always have that issue. Uh, I, it seems like to me that, uh, that, that the one we're talking about right now offers us a, a enhanced ability to actually, uh, take action on some of these properties.
Well, what I would do.
I don't, I don't oppose it going to committee, let's let it go to committee and see what happens.
Well, we'll let the president, um, assign this to a committee at ten-thirty. Madam Clerk.
Zero-three-zero-four-two, concur in appointment of Margot Gilbert and appoint Alita Greenspan and Earl Gochay to the Short Term Rental Citizens Advisory Committee. Zero-eight-zero-four-three.
Are we, are we saying that all of these are citizens of the state of Mobile?
CJ.
Ms. Gregory.
Yeah, uh, my appointee is definitely, um, I'm a, a citizen of the city, he is the president of the Alpine Hills and Alpine Estates Community Action Group. Um, I just do want to remind everybody that we are trying to get this task force set up. Margot Gilbert is who, Visit Mobile is recommending that we appoint to, uh, um, represent the industry. We also still need to appoint someone, um, Margot was representing the hospitality industry, we need to appoint someone who will represent the, uh, short-term rentals, and the mayor also has an appointment, uh, from small business. And so for the council members who have not appointed somebody, if you all will look to see if you can find someone, and go ahead and, uh, get those appointments made.
Uh, Mr. Richardson.
Okay.
Madam Clerk.
Zero-eight-zero-four-three, approve purchase order to emergency equipment professional for four Pierce fire pumper trucks. Zero-eight-zero-four-four, approve purchase order to next wall LLC for architectural wall system for West Regional Library Teen Room. Okay, I'm sorry, the, um, previous one was for two million three hundred six thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars, and the teen room is forty-seven thousand forty-three dollars eighty-seven cents. Zero-eight-zero-four-five, approve purchase order to Person Services Corp. for fourteen room decontamination systems, two hundred and forty-four thousand fifty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. Twenty-one-zero-four-six, authorized contract with Spire for marketing services for the Parks and Recreation Department, fifty thousand dollars. Twenty-one-zero-four-seven, contract with Midwestern Commercial Roofers for Public Safety Memorial Park Building Re Roofing, seventy-two thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. The forty.
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to answer a question too about that one. Um, I didn't, I didn't, in reading the material sent to me, I didn't see where, did we have other bidders? I didn't see where, it didn't show anything about who, who bid it.
Do we have Mr. Chris in?
Yes, I'm here, it was bid out in accordance with state law, I don't have the bid tabulation sheet in front of me, but I can certainly get that.
Yeah, I want to know, um, um, did we have other bidders, and was this, was this the low bidder?
It's always, always the low bidder in case there's something outstanding, but that's not usually the case.
But I think the council order, that information ought to be before us, and the other, the other one is, what is the size of that building?
I will have to check, it's several thousand square feet, but I can get that as well.
Okay, to me, that is a small building, uh, this is, this is almost enough to build a house, so I want to know what the size of the building, I, I would need that too.
Okay, I can get you that.
All right.
Madam Clerk.
Forty-zero-four-eight, four-nine, five-zero, five-one, five-two, affixing the possibility of listing of structures. Forty-zero-five-three, five-four, five-five, five-six, are declaring structures public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Fifty-eight-zero-five-seven and five-eight are declaring weeds noxious and assessing cost for removal of weeds. Weed lean group sixteen-ten and sixteen-oh-eight. Sixty-zero-five-nine, determine and appropriation to the Clotilde Descendants Association serves a public purpose and approved payment, two thousand dollars. Call for public hearing, forty-one-zero-six-zero, call for public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend chapter sixty-four of the city code regarding tree protection requirements, scheduled February twenty-third. Forty-one-zero-six-one, call for public hearing to rezone property located at seven-oh-four Lakeside Drive West, west side of Lakeside Drive West, one hundred and fifty feet south of Cottage Hill Road, from B-one and B-two to B-three, scheduled February twenty-third. Announcement.
We have anything from the council? Um, Ms. Rich, want to discuss your meeting on this afternoon?
Yes, with the utility companies about the abandoned poles and to get an update on the status, and, um, if other utilities are present, I know Alabama Power will be there, and that's, um, they have most of that information for the committee, uh, their updated information apparently. The other, um, groups that have been invited that, uh, you know, access our rights away will certainly be given an opportunity to also say what their updates are. Um, it wouldn't be abandoned poles per se, unless they are attached to the poles, it would be more like their initiatives and, and a work within the city on rights of way, and any questions that a council person might have about their service. And that's at two o'clock.
So Beth, why, why can't we keep it going?
I'm sorry?
Why, why, why we're not doing immediately after council meeting?
Uh, because we invited lots of different people to attend, um, again, I, I'm at their mercy to see whether they actually do attend, but because our meetings have flux, sometimes we finish at one, sometimes we finish at eleven-thirty, I thought it was best when you invite people to have an exact time to start the meeting. So it will be, it's been advertised for two o'clock.
Hey, Beth.
Yes.
You know, we're gonna, uh, Jill used to, Jill used to provide us a spreadsheet, and it'd be really nice if, uh, Mr. Johnson can start providing something like that to us.
Perhaps he, he'll keep up that, um, type of, you know, report, but he said he was going to have or get with the people that would have the most up-to-date information, and perhaps that will be made available, if it isn't, we can ask for it after the fact to get it.
Yeah, we're going to need something like that, just general statements of, you know, let's see the numbers. The, the other thing, the other thing is, there are a couple, and we've mentioned this before, there are a couple of other items that are likely to come up. Uh, one is that there are still instances where there are down lines as a result of the virgins, these are not Alabama power lines, these are lines of utilities that are attached to their poles. I, I think that Alabama Power has a responsibility as the lessor of those lines to ensure that, that they're maintained and that, and that the, you, you, you know, that they're responding. I called, I called a while, because there's one at the end of my street that's been down since September fifteenth.
And it's on an Alabama pole? It's on, you're saying it's on an Alabama pole? Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's been down since September fifteenth, I've called Alabama Power, there's nothing done to it, but, but Alabama Power has, to me, Alabama Power has a responsibility to tend to their own lines, whether the wires that are down are their wires or their, or their lesssees wires, so that's one thing. I also expect that we're going to hear, uh, from, uh, representatives from the Village of Spring Hill about utility trucks parking on our sidewalks. These are, you know, we're spending millions of dollars in this city now, building sidewalks, repairing sidewalks, that kind of thing, and we're still seeing many, many instances of these big two-and-a-half or three-ton trucks pulling off the road onto the sidewalk and, and rubbleizing the sidewalk, and that's just, you know, that makes absolutely no sense at all, and we've got to find a way to address that. So I, I suspect we'll be hearing, uh, that, that we will have, uh, some representatives from the Village of Spring Hill that like to bring that up at the meeting also.
Sure, we, we, yeah, we, we have talked about that, and we also talked about the five G, which, um, in some areas it will be underground, in other areas it might be those poles, and I haven't gotten any complaints so far, but apparently there was a, a big uproar in, um, I think it was in Pensacola, and because they came into a neighborhood and put up poles right in front of people's, you know, it is in the right of way, they don't own it, but they maintain it, and, um, so I thought maybe we would ask about the five G initiative and what that involves with their infrastructure.
CJ.
Ms. Gregory.
Um, going back to talking about the sidewalk damage, I have gotten with Chris to look at what we might be able to do, um, for the sidewalk damage, I mean, it's, um, and he's got something that he's, uh, prepared for right away ordinance, so we can take a look at that. A lot of it is, um, figuring out who did the damage, how to make them go back and do the repairs, and, you know, that kind of thing, so, um, Chris hopefully will have that for us during the meeting, or he can take a look at it.
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Richardson.
Uh, at ten-thirty meeting, I'm going to request, uh, a side of prayer for Hank Aaron and Maki Thomas in my district, and that is the outstanding citizens over in District One that passed away from COVID-nineteen, and I'm going to, uh, read a resolution for Hank Aaron.
And, uh, once we get to presentations, I have a proclamation to read on mentoring.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to make sure we are all on track on what we're going to take up today, which is, uh, zero-three-zero-four-two, which is the appointments to the Short Term Rental Citizens Advisory Committee, and then the, uh, the costs and declaring the structures and, uh, the appropriation to the Clotilde Descendants Association.
What'd you say, Ms. Lambert?
Oh, um, you did say the appointments, right, Mr. Dave?
Yeah, the appointment.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other council members? Air of administration? Not with each other at ten-thirty.